Good evening, I'm Tim Skoggins, Chairman of Shaftesbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at six thirty on Monday, January sixth, two thousand and twenty. Happy New Year to everybody. First, let me check, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
Yes.
No. No. We have minutes to approve. Going back, it looks like to eleven eighteen?
Eleven eighteen is approved today.
We got that one?
Yes, uh, it's the two there, the second of December and sixteenth of December.
Okay. Well, we have enough to approve the minutes for December two as circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes on December two? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? So those minutes are approved, four zero zero. And we have minutes for our meeting on December sixteenth. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? The minutes for December sixteenth are approved, four zero zero. Next up, warrants. First up, it looks like I have check warrant number seventeen in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents.
Some moved.
Motion approved from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Items over a thousand dollars include thirty-four hundred to American Rock Salt, seven thousand to Blue Cross Blue Shield, twenty-five hundred to Bennington County Sheriff, uh, thirteen hundred to Built Blades LLC.
Some flower blades.
Uh, seventy-four hundred dollars to Casella Waste for December services. One thousand and twelve hundred to Giebo Fuels. Twenty-three hundred to Wholesale Distributors. Is that just our credit card?
Wholesale Distributors is, uh, uh, call words, uh, move, uh...
Trees, blades?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
I forgot all of that.
And eighty-six hundred, eighteen hundred, and fifteen hundred to Wyoming Daily.
There's a back page also, Tim, they were printing on both sides.
Ah, way to save a tree. Okay, we've got, uh, twenty-six hundred to Innovative Surface Solutions, that would be our chlori.
Yeah.
Eleven hundred to Morse Repair. Fifty-eight hundred to Reynolds and Sons.
That's the Scott Hatch of the fire department.
Sixteen hundred to Sullivan and Powers.
What's the final payment for the audit?
Uh, twenty-two hundred to Sycamore Landscaping for December Cemetery building. And thirty-four thousand...
It's, uh, North Bennington for the truck. Uh, we should be taking delivery this week, so one hour check ready for them.
Alright.
What are we paying for mowing in December?
Because, uh, Jay asked if we could split the annual contract into monthly payments.
Okay, that's where I was...
Yeah, no, it always sounds weird to say mowing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
He has a steady income.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's better for him to have it split over twelve months than always.
Any other discussion on check warrant number seventeen? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? So, check warrant number seventeen, one hundred and two thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, twelve cents is approved, four zero zero.
Have you got a handle, Dave, on if we're using less salt than we did last year?
Uh, I think it's a little too early yet. We haven't gone out that many times.
Well, it ain't solid, it's mixing the sand.
It's mixing with the sand.
Cause you're gonna use a lot less.
Yeah, we should be using less, but it's a little too early for me to know.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I just wasn't asking for it.
Yeah.
Next, I have payroll warrant number thirteen in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred, twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Some moved.
Motion approved from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Payroll warrant number thirteen, twenty-five thousand, five hundred, twenty-four dollars, twenty-five cents is approved, four zero zero. And this looks to be retirement warrant. Number two, in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty cents.
Some moved.
Motion approved from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Uh, retirement warrant number two, eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, sixty cents is approved, four zero zero. Gotta have to throw this pen. I guess you just wanted to, uh...
I would just pound...
Keep them for yourself.
Get it, get it in the papers.
Well, maybe some of that weight you lost.
I told you right now.
We can take them home with it.
He's gonna pay himself.
Yeah, I was, I was like, wow, that's generous. I feel like we should keep them.
You must had a good cricket.
Oh, I forgot about this.
That's just the folder that John won't throw away.
This is John's folder.
That goes with this, doesn't it?
Don't break that folder.
Okay, uh, next we have check warrant number sixteen in the amount of eighty-three thousand, four and eighty-five dollars.
And that was the community appropriations.
Right, community appropriations, some moved.
Motion approved from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. And those are the community appropriations that were approved, uh, last year.
Yes.
By the voters.
By the voters, yes. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? So, check warrant number sixteen in the amount of eighty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars is approved, four zero zero. Payroll warrant number twelve, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and seven cents.
Some moved.
Motion approved from Tony?
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion on payroll?
Some moved.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining? Payroll warrant number twelve, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, seven cents is approved, four zero zero. How's everything going?
Well, we only had the one big one on the, where you can really lose out is on the holidays, and only one guy came up on New Year's for a couple of hours. Just assault some of the roads.
Are there any announcements? We have not received any, uh, applications for, uh, open political offices. I don't have the list in front of me, but we have open offices, unfilled offices on the Planning Commission and the DRB. We have open seats, uh, coming up on the Planning Commission and DRB. And two of you are running, Art and Tony, are, uh, up for reelection in March. Public comments. Treasurer's report. Treasurer could not be here.
Yeah, she, I sent around her report, she did stop in to do those, but she really needed to go. There really isn't much going on with, with, uh, the reserve funds. Uh, this year's contributions haven't gone in, uh, so...
She said the only thing in the reserve funds was, uh, water payments.
Yeah, the water payments, that's the only thing that really changed. Uh, the only thing with the expenditures that she usually talks about is, I'm running, uh, last year we were at about sixty-one percent, this year we're about forty-six percent of expenditures, but that's really just how things fall in. It's going to absorb the entire budget. Uh, but some years, we do a lot more in the fall than we do in the spring. So it's just, uh, the way it's coming out. It's nothing, no great savings came our way or anything, it's just we haven't gotten to some of the expenses yet.
Right, her email said last year we were ahead of the long-term averages, this year we're a little below the long-term averages. I can say upon a matter of time.
Yeah, it's all depends when the bills come in, and we just added on some things yet this year, so, I don't know if that'll even out.
Alright, that takes us to how to make budget session.
Well, the one thing I, I wanna bring up, uh, because every year we run about fifty to seventy thousand behind in operating the transfer station. The pay system was set up to start July first of two thousand and six at one dollar a bag. We're fourteen years later, and it's still one dollar a bag. Uh, we're probably the lowest around of any size town. A bancon charge is three fifty for a fifteen gallon bag, pound charge is two fifty for the same size bag we have, a twelve pound bag. Uh, I think it's time to generate some revenue from there, try and cut back on the amount of money that's, essentially what you have is, is the non-users are subsidizing the users of the transfer station. Uh, so I'd like to look at this at three ways. First, we just have to bring the rate up to be in line with everybody else, two dollars. There's no way to do this incrementally, one quarter, one fifty, it's impossible to do. A one dollar raise over fourteen years is not, is not a lot. I would leave the sticker price, the access permit the same. We don't need to raise that, that's just to identify people, make sure they're from Shaftesbury. Uh, we can bring up, try and make sure that everyone's paying, although our current rate of what Shelley collects at the transfer station is ninety-three percent of the potential revenue, so we're only like two thousand dollars behind a year. And ninety-three percent in a place like that isn't too bad, cause you have the people who, you know, just hover the bag, don't let all the weight go on it. It's difficult to get a way to do it. So ninety-three percent, I think is pretty good. Last year, everything was down, uh, we were around eighty percent. But the place was a mess for most of the year, as we tore it up and moved it, and just generally made it difficult for anybody to do the job up there. So what I'm looking at to reduce this deficit is a dollar a bag increase during July first. Uh, our contract with, with now Casella needs to be looked into. It runs through twenty-one, but I think, uh, we need to sit down and go through the costs with them and try and reduce the overall management fee there, cause there are options for us to do there, too. Some towns, uh, run the system themselves, I mean, just don't forget, we're still paying Casella for removing the solid waste. So if, if it's two hundred and six tons, we're paying for two hundred and six tons on top of the management contract. So, there are things to look at here. Right now Sunderland is, uh, renegotiating their contract. And, uh, you know, I'm talking, going to talk to the people in Powell, too, cause they run it all staffed by town employees. And just see what some options are to cut down the, the expenses on one end, but I really think we have to bring up the revenue on the other end, uh, cause it is a, a large deficit. And it did get a little larger, people look at it as it goes along. Uh, two years ago, I think it was, two years ago, we renegotiated the, the management contract. And it had only gone up by inflation for ten years. And the cost of all this stuff accelerated, so we did boost it up a little bit more than that, uh, for that one year, and now we're just doing it by inflation. So I think we have a lot of things to discuss with Casella over the next year as we look into the new contract, but I think we can save some money there. There's, there's ways to make this work better for everybody and, uh, you know, move on, save some money, but we do have to generate some revenue here. And I, you know, it sounds like a lot, one dollar to two dollar, but it's been one dollar since two thousand and six, and that's, that's a very long time. Uh, I would bring in, we had an increase actually in the tonnage last year, which was interesting, but we couldn't, because it was such a mess, you couldn't collect the same amount, so I'm thinking it's going to generate between thirty-two and thirty-six thousand dollars, just adding the one dollar to a bag. So that's, uh, a significant reduction in that deficit that that's running, and that allows us to, to flatten things out. And like I said, in the following year, if we can renegotiate with Casella and bring that down some more, it would be a good deal for the town. But there's no way around staying at one dollar. That's my proposal for that, cause we have to get that, we've been working on the income lines. The budget line is, is, the expense line is fairly done, but when you, when you break it down, it's just, uh, too much of a loss for, for one section. And that doesn't include, this is just transfer station. That doesn't include the really skyrocketing cost of landfill over the last three years with having to do more testing, having to test area, you know, the whole story with the testing area houses and things. So this is just landfill operations is losing about fifty thousand dollars a year, on a good year. And that's consistent all the way back for four or five years. It's just time to equalize this a little bit. And it still won't be, the consumers still won't be funding the whole thing. They'll still have a town subsidy on it.
And I think it's worth mentioning, that's always been the, the philosophy of select boards going back, as far as I know, and talking to previous select board members, that, uh, our intention has always been to subsidize some of the cost of solid waste disposal in the town. But it, uh, it's just gotten to be too much. And so by raising this a dollar, we'll still be subsidizing it significantly, just not ridiculously.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'll cut our subsidy in half, but we'll still be subsidizing quite a bit of it, so...
Yeah, I agree. I think the thing to do is, um, to talk about it, maybe even put up a sign out there indicating that come July, the rate's gonna go up and give people time to get used to the idea.
And I have a mailer that they used in two thousand and six that can be, uh, modified, that we could even post or send out to help explaining things to people. But, uh, yeah, it is a fourteen-year wait for an increase, and that's pretty reasonable, holding the line for fourteen years.
Explain how it works up there, if someone goes up there and buys a sticker.
It's a dollar per twelve pounds.
Right, but, so they, so they, um, when do they pay the dollar?
They give the dollar to Shelley. Uh, usually people buy ten at a time, so they'll give, uh, it's a dollar per sticker, however many stickers they want, we'll just give Shelley the money. And, uh, that's all there is to it. Then they weigh it, we have a scale there, it's a certified scale, they weigh it. But this is where I think the ninety-three percent is actually pretty good, cause she's within a couple of thousand dollars and, and, because, you know, as people go by, it's, you know, they're holding too bad, here's one, here's one, about two dollars. You know, and the weight's always a little over, there's a lot of rounding going on.
And so a sticker goes on and...
Yeah, or they usually throw them in the, in the bag, until they're compacted with it.
But my point is, is if, we're gonna have to change colors of stickers, cause somebody could buy a whole bunch of one dollar stickers and use them after July first.
Yeah, no, that, that's true, and, uh, what will happen is, uh, because we're, we're running down the stickers now, uh, we will just change the color. They've been orange forever, so we'll just change them to some other color so that, uh, yeah, that wouldn't happen. And then like I said, the access permits, there's no reason to raise the access permit, we'll leave it at twenty dollars, it's really just identifying who's a resident.
You get Shelley's stamp that says forever on it.
Yeah, forever stamp. No forever stickers.
While we're talking about it, I noticed in the audit, they mentioned again that they don't like the way we handle the money at the transfer station.
We have, uh, what we're doing now is, is we're gonna try to appease them with this. We have receipt books that Shelley will turn in, multi-part receipts, that Shelley will have one in her book, Joan will have one when she processes the money, and the treasurer will have when she processes the money, so we can keep track. I'll have another book, when Shelley has issued the stickers to sell, she'll have to sign them out for me with that book, so there's a receipt from me to Shelley for the stickers, and a receipt from Shelley to Joan in bookkeeping, and to the treasurer, so that we have a trail of where it's all going. The only, the only other possibility is wiring something up and getting a kiosk that's gonna keep track of this, because they suggested a cash register. Anybody who's worked at the transfer station, it's not gonna work with a cash register, you know? Uh, and I'm not aware of anybody else doing it that way either. I mean, when you go, it's where any other Casella facility, uh, cause we're the only one I'm aware of that has this joint thing going on here, uh, but they don't have any cash registers.
No, it'll freeze.
Yeah, though it, it would be impossible to, to do. I mean, they had talked to us about, well, we could give everybody a receipt. It's like, people do not want a receipt. Yeah, if they wanna give the dollar, get the five stickers and leave, is what they wanna do, so... I understand where they're coming from, but it's not that simple, uh, an issue. And again, we have a, a complete track, this will just tighten up the track, of how many stickers go up there and how much revenue we generate. And we're not missing any. They're not suggesting we're missing any. They're just like, you know, this needs better recording, so we're gonna try and do the better recording for them this year, and, uh, we'll see how this works for them.
I think it's also important, you know, when I was up there, to trust people, too. I mean, you know, it's Shaftesbury, people are pretty honest about, you know, and people rigorously put their trash on the scale and, and weigh it up.
I've, I've never, with the times I've, I've stopped with Shelley, I've never really
No.
seen much of anybody trying to get away with anything. People will come over and get their things, and, you know, there's a few people who should get their access permit, I suppose, and we can look into that, but as far as the weighing goes, you know, it's not, two thousand dollars is, is not a hell of a lot of weight anyway, but, uh, you know, people are rounding. I mean, there's no doubt people are rounding, so, you know, it's usually rounded down, but, I think that's where a lot of it is. And then there are some things that just go by that some people just, you know, will toss a little extra in, but I don't, I don't see that as the end of the world. It's the receipts that the accountants are worried about, and we are gonna try to address that. Uh, we talked to them about the receipt book method, and, uh, they're willing to give it a shot, see how it works for them. But we don't, the way we track them now, there is no discrepancy. You know, ten, a thousand stickers go up and we get a thousand dollars back. You know, and we're not missing them, cause they're all sequentially numbered, so she's getting them in sequence, and we're recording them here in sequence. Uh, and they hold up.
You looking for a motion, Tim?
Yeah, I think that would probably be, uh...
Yeah, to raise it, we probably should have a motion.
Yeah, helpful.
Some moved.
So a motion from Art to raise the sticker price for twelve pound bag of trash from one dollar to two dollars, effective July first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Seconded by Tony. Any other discussion?
Uh, my only fear is that, I, I know we're still awarding everybody else, but if you get that bags too high, you're gonna fight them side your own.
Yeah.
So I wanna keep it really as low as you can. And I think they've done a good job, but it's just, I know too many backroads.
Yeah.
People could, you know, take a ride at ten o'clock at night.
Yes, yes, and that's part of why the, the town government has always had the philosophy that we would subsidize
Yeah.
the, the trash, the, the solid waste disposal. It's just that we have to, we need an adjustment after
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years, yeah.
And we still will be lower than the neighboring towns, so...
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, um, my vote of four zero zero, effective
July first.
July first, two thousand and twenty, the cost for, pays you throw one, one bag, twelve pounds, will go from one dollar to two dollars. Good. Thank you, Dave.
Uh, the other part of the budget, I, I think we should have, uh, a brief special session just to go over the budget in, in detail, so it can be up here, we can go through the things. I've had, had to make some changes again. Uh, the community appropriations came in seven thousand higher the last year. Uh, we're selling equipment, which is gonna have a one-time increase in revenues, offset by using it in the Equipment Reserve Fund, but it makes the whole thing look larger, so I'd like to explain this, make sure everybody's on the same page with this. And just a few other things, we have to tweak a number of columns. Uh, I've been analyzing the last five years of projected revenues and things, and we have to tighten up some and expand some to just make it more realistic to what we're looking at every year. So I think if we could have, uh, a day, you know, a six-thirty meeting some Monday night or something, uh, between now and the middle of the month, uh, which I guess would make it next week. Just, just to, you know, go over this thing once and for all. There's no major changes, but just to tweak it out so we can get it in the book. If it's not next Monday, the, the Monday afterward, any day of the week, really.
Next Monday is the thirteenth. Shall we just make it then?
I'm all set for that.
Okay.
Six thirty.
Yes. Okay, so, special budget meeting, six thirty, Monday, January thirteenth. Okay, now we'll add that to the calendar. I was also realizing that what we just voted on is gonna affect the budget as well for
Yeah, I've already...
what we were talking about.
Yeah, I've been calculating that in to, uh, offset some of the newer expenses. So, yeah, there's, like I said, there's all this little tweaking, and then the overall budget hasn't changed from what you, you got in prior ones, but there are different columns that we have to, should go through and, uh, just have that as the only topic, so we can just go through it completely. So it really shouldn't take too long, but I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page as we move on here.
Open to the public, too, I think we should.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Emphasize that, if somebody's got any...
Yeah, we posted and everything, yeah.
If anybody's got any concerns, they should...
Yeah. Do you think we need to broadcast it? It's gonna be fairly tedious, right, going through?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, it's probably going through the four hundred some odd lines pretty much one by one. I don't know.
Yeah, I would say, Jim, we don't need, uh, cat TV here for that. If people wanna
Thank you.
Go through, uh, four hundred line spreadsheet with us, they're welcome to join us in the room here.
We could, if you want, we could record it and for playback later for people that would be interested. We wouldn't necessarily have to go live.
I, uh, I can't imagine anybody would wanna watch that for two hours on YouTube. So let's just, uh, we'll say it will not be, uh, broadcast, but it will be a, a public meeting.
Yeah, it's public, okay.
Alright. Anything else on the budget?
No, we'll, we'll pick up all that next Monday.
Alright. How the road's going?
Uh, well, we, you know, we've had our little ruts and potholes we're trying to deal with, uh, that's just gonna continue on for the next three months. Hopefully we wouldn't have some of the mud disasters we had last year. Uh, but it's weather dependent, you know, there's not...
Yeah, it looks like we're going from having five mud seasons a year to just having one long, three-month-long mud season that we used to call winter.
Yeah, um, you know, some areas like, like the Shaftesbury Hollow Hill, and a few of the other places, we put drains in and, and work on things, they're, they're holding up the hills in great shape. But it's all, it's all weather, you know, if this thaws and rains and pours like it's supposed to this weekend, and then freezes again, and then thaws, it's, you know, it's still at the end of the day, it's dirt, and it's gonna have caused problems. You know, we're trying to address things, people, as people have called, you know, uh, town line out off sixty-seven, uh, they called today and had some giant potholes over there apparently, so, you know, we're trying to get to what can be gotten to. And then, you know, today, this little snow, they all had to go out sanding everywhere, and, uh, you know, it's difficult when you have that in the middle of the day, cause people call, you know, you need the road sand, but all the sanders are out, but each guy has about a twelve, thirteen mile route, so it, it takes a little time to get around, so, uh, you know, it's, it's winter, and we'll just see what each week brings. The plowing, the sanding, and, and all that is the... The plowing, the sanding and all that is the easy part, dealing with the mud. And if it's like last year, just hoping we don't get last year again. Because it's actually getting quite expensive to have multiple-mud seasons. You know, that's one of the drivers of the increase in the gravel usage last year. Which you could look at as, well, that's a one-off, that wouldn't happen again, you absorb it for the year, but time will tell. We're fine for this year, because we have a lot left over. Even though we were pretty aggressive with gravel already this year, but you know, a bad mud season can eat it up pretty quickly. But we'd like, we just talked about North Bankton, should be finally receiving their new truck and we'll be taking their truck into the fleet. Our other, our new truck should be ready two weeks ago. But as with everything, you know, this part didn't come in or that part didn't come in, so we're still waiting, but that should be here relatively soon. Tomorrow, I'm going to put on the state bid page to replace it's one of the two thousand and nine seventy-four hundreds. We'll buy a single-axle dump, should be about one sixty. That'll come from the cash we have, from the reserve fund and from this one income line this year, sale of equipment, because we have a lot of things, these two things here, the tractor vator, a couple of other things to sell, which should generate twenty-five, a minimum of twenty-five and more when we get done selling all this stuff. So that'll be the unusual income line this year, which will offset the increase in the equipment line. That'll get that truck for cash, the fire truck, the chassis has, the fire department, sorry. But anyway, I'm on trucks, so the chassis has gone to the body shop for the fire truck we ordered. And of course, that'll be done in like eighteen months, but it's underway anyway. Otherwise, the roads, it's just winter and they're trying to keep up and they're going around, when the roads get rough like they did last week, they're doing their best. There are some limitations to what you can do with potholes and dead winter. It's a shame they're there, and those are the things where we'll mark out and try and correct the underlying problem when, in the construction season. But you really can't fix things in the middle of winter. You can just record and come back and try and fix them, so it doesn't happen the next winter. Yep, that's about it for the roads for today.
Okay. Can we put that single axle out till we find out how that new Chevy's gonna do?
No.
What happened?
Because it's, we need one. We have two, two old single axles and one needs to go.
You get by spring and you don't need it. You get by snow and you don't need it.
Well, we're having a large debate over the, that new body we have and the single axle, you know. There's a benefit to, first off, when you have a tailgate spreader, it's one thing. When you're going up the hills and you need volume to cover a long route and you're going up hills, having the spreader by the tire just gives you, well, you know all this better traction to get up the hills and everything, so.
Well, there's a plus, minus, any of that.
Yeah, it is, so.
When you're doing half the price for the same job.
Well, except it's multiple trips back to the pile, which
It ain't with that truck. It's the same volume with that single axle.
Don't think it's gonna wear, right? I want, I want a full season or two. You may be right, but we really have to work this.
The highest GVW you can get, your small one, is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, but your, your, yours owns sand and salt, and it's a lot lighter.
But, and it's thirty-six to forty thousand on a single axle, so your carrying capacity is twice.
Yeah, and even if it's, even if you're looking at the weight, you're looking at volume. The volume that the single axle can carry is much larger, so the truck can cover much greater distance.
Exactly the same on that new Chevy we're getting, the same single axle we got right now. Exactly the same yardage. I measured it.
Well, I know.
You might be able to, the yardage might be the same, but you can't put that much weight.
Yeah.
You can't
But I know, that's what I'm saying, that, but you, the stuff that you, we use the truck more in the winter. Them single axles, you don't have to use them in the summer. So you don't need the weight, you need the volume for the sand or salt in the winter time.
Because of the sand and salt being so heavy, you aren't gonna be able
It's lighter. That salt weighs about a thousand pounds a ton. Gravel weighs three, thirty-two hundred watts.
But this truck is not, is not a salt truck. It's a sand truck. It's gonna be a winter sand truck with less salt mixed in. This is salt's ability to keep it on the pile. So we're reducing the salt in the piles, so the weight in the trucks actually is gonna be more.
It's that, sand and salt are your two lightest products, you could put them
Oh, I know that it's lightest, but you're still putting a lot of weight
No, I'm not saying, I'm not comparing that truck for a single axle for weight, just for volume.
Oh, okay, all right. But the other big issue
And the cost of the thing.
Well, yeah, and the other big issue is the spinner by the wheels.
I'll give you that one.
Because the tailgate's
But your type of four-wheel-drive truck is a single axle, or two-wheel drive.
Yeah, you know, there's an issue with four-wheel-drive trucks too, if you ask me. They're far more expensive to maintain.
When do we need to make a decision on
If we don't order this truck now, if we don't put a bid out now and issue an award in February, we won't have it next winter. Trucks are running about a year behind.
All right, well, I think we need the road foreman in here to inform this discussion.
We'll have him back, we'll have him until next meeting.
When you gonna put your bid out?
After the next meeting, because I was gonna put, well, you know, I can put it out tomorrow anyway. We can just not accept it, that's always part of it.
I think you gotta get it out there.
It has to get out, people have to start seeing it. The bid board, everyone in the state reads the bid board. I'll put just a little blurb of the Bankton banner. But the state bid board is where everybody looks for things. I'll get that out tomorrow and then heading to the next meeting. And I'll have, the due date wasn't gonna be until the first meeting in February, whatever that is, the seventh, I think. And we'll take it from there. But, you know, I've been listening to both sides of this, and I have to lean more towards the heavier truck right now. And then if we prove the smaller truck, we have another one that has to be replaced, and then we wouldn't replace that one. We'd get two of these. But right now, we don't know, so I'm leaning
Well, I didn't say anything, I I just thought, I just think, I think they'll recover.
Yeah.
Because I watched them trucks all summer, the single axles just sitting up there all summer long.
Yeah, well, that's a problem when you have special-purpose vehicles almost. I mean, they can do a lot of different things, but you know, mainly, we need them to salt roads properly and sand roads properly. And that's why they all have the chain beds and everything. Which is the other problem with the smaller truck, because you're talking about tailgate sanding. And then you're talking about driving on these roads while you're putting the bed up.
Do we not like tandems anymore?
We don't need a tandem. Well, we'll be replacing the tandems when the time comes.
Yeah, I think we did
With tandems or with single?
No, with tandems. The tandems do serve a purpose.
Well, you have to have tandems. Look, we have to have a smaller truck, because there's places tandems can't turn around.
Yeah, that's why the Chevy is ideal for going in here, because even that Dodge we're trading in, because it had a crew cab, it was difficult to make turns on some of these small streets down here. So the Chevy is much better at maneuverability. But it has problems on longer routes and hills and, because it's tailgate, I mean, if we get, we'd lose all your savings if we get into a chain bed in it, because then that costs
Well, no, if you got, if you got that small truck, the one we're getting is you gotta stay with the old body of it. The body's gonna last forever, because the one that's
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying, if we had to have a tailgate, if we had to have a chain feeder in it, that body would cost three times as much as it is now. And then there'd be no savings whatsoever.
No, but that tailgate sand, I'll tell you, they were better, I think. I knew the advantage with the motor spinner by the front of the wheel. But these other trucks are four-wheel-driving versus two-wheel-driving too, so. You can go out and no chains add, other times. I'm telling you, I've done it for sixty years, I have
Well, what we'll do is, I'll have Mike here for the next meeting, so we can debate this. I'll put the bid out tomorrow, because it always has the disclaimer that we can withdraw it at any time. That way we can get people started, because it is, it is a good ten, twelve months from order to delivery these days.
All right. Is it all on the roads? Just briefly mentioned that on the March ballot, you will see a question. Shall the town of Shastberry join the Southern Vermont Communication Union District? We urge you to vote yes on that. We are taking advantage of Act Seventy-nine, the broad unveil that just passed, and working with a number of towns in the area to form a communication union district and try and get internet to the people that don't have it. Important thing to know about it is that it cannot cost tax money by state law. Town tax money cannot be spent on communications infrastructure, so it will be paid for by the people who use the internet service. It is the best hope we have right now for getting internet services to people that don't have it. And we are up to eight towns, Arlington, Bennington, Dorset, Rupert, Sandgate, Shastberry, Sundown, and Win Hall have all agreed to put the question on the ballot, so we are hopeful that that will, will carry in all of those towns, including Shastberry. Any other business?
Just a couple of quick things. Catamount Television, the new contract's forty-two hundred dollars for twenty-twenty, which is similar to last year. I did ask them to split, because we're on the fiscal year, I would pay half now and half after July first. I believe the board has the vote to approve the contract, though. So it's forty-two hundred dollars for twenty-four Shastberry Select Board meetings, three and a half hours per meeting, and fifty dollars for all additional meetings beyond the twenty-four. It's pretty much the same as we had last year.
Second. A motion to accept the CAT TV contract as just described by David. Moved by Tony, second by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
The second is a contract with Vanington County Regional Commission. This was out on bid to the statewide. This is for the Shastberry Hazard Mitigation Plan, that has to be the Shastberry Hazard Mitigation Plan preparation that we knew this year. It was awarded to, by vote, worth the Vanington County Regional Commission for ten thousand one hundred dollars, seventy-eight hundred of which we're reimbursing the grant. And I just need to have Tim's signature on this, and we'll be tapped as
We already voted on this?
Yeah, we already voted on this, yes.
Art? Yeah, I was contacted by a Shastberry resident who saw some people taking pictures of the the old church at Center Shastberry. And when he asked them what they were doing, he said, "Well, it's for sale. We'd be interested in buying it." So I haven't heard a thing about it, and I think the Historical Society should come in and talk to us at our next meeting to tell us what is going on, if it's true or not true.
Okay. Without objection, we will contact them. No other business? The action items I captured was, we're gonna get Mike in at our next meeting to talk about the truck bid. David is cleared to go ahead and post it with the usual caveat that we may not buy it after we we bid it out, but it's gonna take a while to get that. And then to make contact with the Historical Society and ask them to come to our next meeting and describe what's going on with the old church. And we need to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, should be very brief.
So move.
Motion to, from Art, to go into executive session. Second by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.